And his mother liked Elvis Presley. Blue Christmas? The Christmas tree was blue, the lights were blue, the balls were all blue.
Wow.
Everything was blue.
Dave just walked in, yeah, I can see it. Dave, Dave stopped blocking. Uh, needs to be turned.
Next week's meeting.
That way.
You better or not?
I, that's not good. Really slow today.
Go there to China, you know, back.
That's good. And it's been shared with all the three.
Go ahead. Calls meeting to order, it is November seventh, twenty twenty four, and officially five oh one. We'll go ahead and start with board member comments, start with you Curtis.
Uh, Rick. Uh, since the last time we met, uh, the haunted house was a good turnout. Uh, I think we actually got more donations than what we actually spent on it this time, which was great. Uh, it was a good turnout, I don't know how we had exact numbers, and we're in the process of starting to take it down. Uh, the next community dinner is gonna be on the sixteenth of November, and that's gonna be the turkey and mashed potato, the Thanksgiving dinner. Uh, at the community center from four to six. And there will be a breakfast in December with the breakfast with Santa. And the community dinner in December is on the fourteenth, and that's, I think, is gonna be the ham dinner. Uh, but most beginning is the first Friday of each month since while schools are open. And if we don't get more people to show up for the community breakfast, uh, to, so we're not taking a loss each time. Uh, we're gonna end up stopping the community breakfast, so it's gonna have Y I tape out there, so hopefully maybe a turnout in December moving forward. Uh, planning board met yesterday, we went over, uh, flow chart, we went over. Well, we discussed about the vacant seats, we still have vacant seats, even though we had somebody show up that wanted to sit that vacant seat, it got voted down. Uh, and we're starting to go over the uh, potential amendments to the zoning ordinance, work order ordinance, and possible changes, uh, to put on the warrant article coming up for voting, so. If you wanna be part of that, or wanna put comments in it, hopefully come to the next plan. Other than that, uh, we've got nothing. Oh, thanks for everyone that came out and voted, we have eleven hundred and forty-five people that showed up for voting. Uh, thanks for all the people that worked, the ballot clerks, the checklist, uh, selectmen obviously, uh, the moderators, the assistant moderator, and all the volunteers that helped count. I think this was the fastest year that we counted, uh, with eleven hundred and forty-five vote voters.
Amazing.
Which is a record turnout, by the way. Uh, and I think we definitely need to look into purchasing a, uh, voting, uh, the ballot counter machine. And getting that on the warrant article and getting that passed for the next couple of elections and everything. So it'll make it a lot easier and a lot quicker to do it instead of hand counting. All these, I think it's time to move forward and get the one machine and, uh, what I'm being told by the town clerk is there is a grant out there for thirty-five hundred dollars for our first machine, which we only need one for our town. So we can get thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, paid for off the eighty-five hundred dollars it's gonna cost. So I think it's a I think it'd be a great benefit to the town, especially if you've never counted or been through this process.
Hmm.
Uh, volunteer and do it, so you can understand it, but I know there's been
Yeah, that'll cure ya.
Yeah, you will, there's been nights of two, three o'clock in the morning. Uh, TJ was with me one, that night, and we were looking for one ballot. The number's not matching up and everything like that, and it's just tedious, it's a long night. People are tired, and if we don't have the volunteers coming in to help us do this, uh, we end up missing things, and we don't wanna be inaccurate on our numbers. So thanks you for all the volunteers and all the people that worked for Alex, or for voting this last election and the last couple of elections, so. That's all I got.
Dick?
Well, I was gonna do a lot, talk about a lot of stuff about voting, but Curtis bring your cover.
Alright.
Okay. Based on that, I got nothing.
You can do the tree.
Oh, well, we, the, thank you, we have the town Christmas tree. Uh, at long last, it is on the south end of the common. Roughly centered near a outlet that looked like it needed a Christmas tree in Europe. And we will arrange to have it decorated in a reasonable timeframe, but not right now, it's just the week after Halloween for God's sake. So a week after Thanksgiving seems appropriate. But I've already had people ask me when we are going to decorate it.
There's already a tree up in my house, trust me.
What?
There's already a tree up in my house, trust me.
Oh, okay.
So are we gonna have a, like, festivity for the lighting of the tree, like?
Be fun.
People come to the common and sing Christmas carols and
Well?
Light the tree.
Gotcha a thought.
That's what we used to do when I lived in Pittsburgh back in the seventies and eight sixties.
We have the, they have the Bridge of Joy, but they do that over at the community center now.
Yeah.
So, we haven't worked that out yet, but I think that would be a really nice thing to do, they do it up in Keene on the
Yeah.
Friday, Saturday after Thanksgiving. So then do we wanna try and compete with Keene, that's, seems a little unlike Tree in Keene is bigger, but ours is permanent, ours will be bigger sooner. We're, details to follow.
Do you want any assistance?
We, I was thinking you were gonna do it, so.
Apparently you don't need a ladder right now.
No, that's not true, you do.
Oh, okay. A small ladder.
No, it's a small one, it's not a ladder yet, you don't need a crane yet.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Okay. Exact trailer. Um, let's see, there is a Z B A meeting next week, water and sewer commission meeting next week. Um, so I will need both of those covered for me, cause I am going to be out of state.
I'm taking the Z B A meeting.
So, you think you can cover the water and sewer, it's on Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Yes, this is checking, saying all the official information, that certainly comes to me.
The thirteenth?
Yes. Yes, I will cover that because I have a few questions for them anyway.
Oh.
I figured you did.
Yes.
And, uh, make sure you, you, uh, grab this. I don't know how to set that up, so I need directions. There are directions. And if you really need to, you can call in Scott, if he's feeling better.
You can probably just say it too.
Yes. Start at six down there.
Do you wanna announce that online payments for water and sewer is in works?
Really?
Yeah, they actually agreed to this last meeting.
No cost to town.
Yeah, it'll be no cost to town, it'll be just like
Why would there be any cost, we're already paying for it.
Well, Chrissy pays monthly fee for her card reader and some other fee.
So they'll, they won't accept cards here, but they'll take online payments.
Somebody comes in with a card, then either we have to run it or ideally from home they can pay it.
You just go online and pay it, that's what you do with the other towns.
Yeah, and then you want to come in and say hi to us.
That's positive.
Well, most importantly, you can pay it at four o'clock in the morning before you go to work, or seven o'clock in the evening after you get home, where you go, Jesus, I meant to pay the morning.
Oops, I forgot my water bill.
Well, it happens, yeah.
Uh, caveat of that, I got one more thing, um, registering votes. Um, town clerk found out that we are bonded, that we can register votes here in town. She's looking to find out the details on it, but we've been losing a lot of revenue, uh, last several years. Not registering votes for the town, um, even though we've been bonded, uh, we just haven't been doing it, but she's gonna find out and hopefully all, all votes will be able to get registered here in town, you won't have to go to other areas to do it.
More revenue on votes.
There's actually quite a few votes, actually, I mean, I'll put one vote, so. That's a good thing.
Alright, um, public comment, anyone got public comment tonight? Are we all here for budgets?
No, I'm getting public comments.
Alright, what you got?
I've got a few of them. Most of them regarding the mill project. From my understanding, when the fire marshal was first brought in, one of the agreements was he wanted a set of plans to be handed in, has one, a set been handed in?
Plans for what?
For what he's got going on down there.
The only thing the fire marshal will care about is fire sprinkler, and there is a set of plans here in town hall for the fire sprinkler system.
Okay. Um, have inspections been kept up like they supposed to been?
As far as I've been
Building inspections?
As far as I've been told, yes.
So, I mean, any records of it being kept?
Uh, every time we get a bill. Jeremy was the last one we got a bill for.
The mill probably a month or so. He's like been there for ten.
But remember, he, he's currently on, with what we've been told, he's only doing demolition. Because he's on hold because of legal litigation.
So, on any new structures being built or anything else, no inspections have been done?
Uh, there's, I'm not sure which ones you're talking about.
I think, I assume you're talking about the framing on top of the
Yeah.
Yeah. That would, you would call, he would call for inspect, the framing inspection when he's done. But I think he's, I, I think he's stopped work right now.
Now, is that phase one or part of phase two?
Not our projects, but not sure where.
It's, it's not part of the residential section at all.
Okay, so it's not even a set of being framed up right now?
No.
I think that side that is being framed up is a replacement of his roof.
Yeah, that's the roof.
So he's just, he took off his old roof, he's replacing it.
Over, over the commercial part.
And, I'm, I'm understanding that when he was given a building permit, that it was good for four years. Is this true?
I think he was given one for two years. We can look, if you, Jeremy, can you pull his building permit?
Yeah, I was trying to.
So you don't have to follow the state guidelines on a yearly building permit?
So, I, I'm not Can you see what we issued for building permit?
Just trying to, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Alright, well, we're waiting for that, I know last year at town meeting, it was mentioned that somebody on the select board would try and get ahold of EverSource to have them streetlights replaced.
Yeah, we've been doing that, is there another one out?
Another one? I mean, I only know the one on my street, and then coming on North Main Street here, the five that are out there.
Did you report them to?
I haven't, I'm asking because I know it was mentioned that it was the select board.
Well, we, we got, so, well, ones we knew about, actually, I know the ones on Russell Avenue got replaced, cause I hate them.
Yeah, there's another one on Manok Street that got replaced.
So if they weren't reported to us, we don't know.
Alright, that's why I'm asking, that's before I went and reported one myself, so that's all.
Yeah, if, if you reported them, then they should've gone to the
I have not, that's why, that's why I'm asking here first, if somebody reported.
Well, if you let us know.
We'll get it in the system too. One way or another, it has to be, someone has to report them to us, and I don't always drive around at night.
Oh, I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Cause they asked for, the tag number on the pole.
Yeah.
The location.
Yeah, you really just have an approximate area.
Yeah, and it's, so
I'll get an email when it opens the ticket, and then I'll get an email once it's complete.
Yeah, so we've gotten, we've, we've replaced and repaired quite a few of them, after they're reported to us, well, we did it, EverSource.
EverSource, yeah.
So, it's a, it's a process, you have, we have to get it, submit it to them, and then, as you know, it's a total
Bottom line is, we have to know about it.
Alright, that's why, well, I said, before I went called in on my own, and I said, I only travel this side of town, so I know there's at least four of them over there out on North Main Street.
Jeremy, how long ago, you gave me the list, and then I went out, we went out and the P D, we went out and checked every street and wrote down the numbers of holes. How long ago was that, was that six months ago?
Yeah, it was probably March-ish.
Yeah, and they were out working on them for about the summer. Don't know if they got them all over.
The one that crossed from my house was out, has been on and off, the thing is, I, they were there, and I was like, great, they're fixing it. But they get up there and they put their hand over the eye, and it comes on. That's good. Where they went, well, it comes on for about five minutes and goes off for two minutes and comes on.
It was on last night.
Cause they
It leaves on the trees that fall, and I can see it in my back, which I'm window.
She's at our lights, or the, the street
I thought it was the way, I
I reported, I reported it, but like he said, they come and they check it.
You had one up on your sop or someplace?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple.
It looked like it was way high up, I heard.
We have cats walk, it's motion light, so it goes off at eleven.
I don't know which ones, but I know I've counted like four of them on North Main Street between here and, you know, where they stopped.
We can do it again.
I mean, I have one at my house.
You have it in the roadway.
Yeah, that's, that's the third time.
One conversation.
This year?
They've been twice already, not this year.
Oh, alright, alright. Listen, for the ones that go on and off, that's most likely either, there's a bright light hitting it, cause they're very sensitive to lights. Any type of light can shut off when it lights up.
I understand, I know that's not bad.
Things like that can happen. If it's going on and off and you don't see any light out there, report it as a damaged solar cell. They'll get out and they'll, most likely replace the photo cell on it or replace one of the new L E D ones that they have, that's actually what they're supposed to do anyways, if any of that are being reported, they're supposed to replace them with LEDs. If they haven't been doing that, they're just being going back and forth.
So his original permit was signed eight, eighteen of twenty twenty-two and expired in a year. So it expired in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it was, it was signed when?
August eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, so it was good for one year from then.
And has he reapply for another one?
I think that's a timeline.
That was a legal issue.
I think there was a, I think, yeah, because it was, he was tied up because of the legal issue, so I, I think there's another one issued in there.
Yeah, there's probably other ones for other aspects of the project, probably. This is for up to one hundred and fifteen units.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you put in one with specifically twenty-nine as well.
Right, later, after the, after the litig, cause it was issued, and then it went to litigation, and so we went through that process, so then I think another one was issued after that.
So are you saying he has a legal building permit at this moment?
That's our understanding.
For a year at a time? Yeah, I don't know, I'm just, that's why I'm asking, what I've heard.
Before, like, five years ago, there was no expiration, or it was just, you get a building permit, there was no date set for it.
Yeah.
It wasn't until like four or five years ago, we started putting them one year at a time, so you come in after a year and get another one, and hopefully
Yeah, our, our, our building permits were in, into infinity in this town, until it was after I got here.
Yeah.
Probably till twenty.
So the states?
States.
You don't, you don't have to, there are towns that do not issue building permits. You do not have to issue a building permit.
Swansea was actually under the same thing, cause, uh, people were putting in, getting building permits and didn't have an expiration date. After twenty years, they're still, I have a building permit for it, there's no expiration date on it.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, crowds still have a couple of those sitting around in this town.
I'm sure we did, but that's, that's one of the reasons why we decided to put this in there.
That's why we put expiration dates, I even looked at the first ones that I signed, and I had to write in an expiration date, cause there was no space where it expires, whatever the day was.
So he hasn't applied for any new ones for anything else lately?
Well, he's got under, uh, litigation, so it's under, technically that's, project is on restart.
One of his last ones was the demo, probably.
Yeah, we did issue a demolition permit.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's been, right.
And I don't think there's any work going on beyond that.
Currently you don't need a permit to redo your, your roof.
Oh, I know.
So, if he's working
Oh, I know all that, yeah. And then, uh, I mean, just my opinion, but who thought it was a good idea of trying to point somebody who's to the planning board who's currently suing the town?
Well, the comment that was made yesterday, once again, with that, that reasoning, technically, Michael Clerk, the water and sewer chair shouldn't be on the planning board either, and neither should I, because I'm a selectman representative.
Okay.
So we're getting sued, and I brought that up during the meeting yesterday. That, with that reasoning, Mr. Ferris is one of the people that came in and asked to be on this. None of his projects are coming through the planning board right now, we're literally talking about warrant.
Well, that's, that's not my point though, I mean, he's in the process of suing the town, and somebody wanted to appoint him to the planning board?
I made a motion to appoint him, it got turned down, it got voted down.
Alright, I know, so
Wait, wait, wait. The people who were asked, which would be Eric Ferris
Mm-hmm.
And the other lady, uh, I can't remember her name.
Apparently Kim Cassidy, you emailed him, she said she didn't want it.
Yes, well, so, they were called because they received votes in the election. So ordinarily, when you have a position go vacant, what we've done here traditionally is anybody who got votes for that position that orders up, that's who you call.
And the only reason why I made a comment, or, put, the, made a motion to put him on, it's not like people are pounding down the door to be on a planning board, or any other board in this town. He was on the ballot, he lost, he was one of the next people in line, he showed up to the meeting. His projects are not being anything, so he's not making any major decisions, we literally have eight more meetings, I think it is, before the next election. He puts his name on the ballot, he gets elected. Whether there's a lawsuit against the town or not, he's now an elected official for the planning board, it's not gonna take, it's not gonna matter.
Well, I understand that, but
So right now, we need the thing, once again.
And, and I, I, I think there's an important point here. Uh, I understand your point, you feel bad because he's suing the town. And so no one should, your argument would be that no one should be able to do anything with the town if they're suing the town. But that's not the way the law works.
Oh, I understand that, but I mean
You know, the, if we follow, if we follow procedure, which has been the procedure as long as I've been here, which isn't all that long, but it's been a little while. Is, you call the guy who was the runner-up. That's all that happened here. Uh, if you don't think that, if we shouldn't have followed that procedure, we should have come up with a new rule, the, we don't like Eric Ferris rule.
I mean, that's, that's got nothing to do with it, you know, this is
Well, so he has every right to sue the town, just like you do. And whether he's suing the town, not suing the town, he's actually not suing the town, he's suing the water board. Which the water board has gone out of its way to make it clear that Ferris, they would like to be a separate entity from the town. And what they actually are, is, is since you wanna have this conversation.
No, that's fine, huh?
The, the water board
Commissioned.
Is commissioned, they're separate when it suits them, and they're part of the town when it suits them.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have to pay a bill, or you don't have enough money, the bill comes over here, and every taxpayer in town pays for it. But when you wanna go off and run up your legal bills, or not settle a lawsuit, or piss and moan about something, well, you're a free and independent country, and you have nothing to do with the town of Troy.
Then why didn't the town agree to take over their billing for them?
Why?
Right.
Take over what building?
Well, billing.
Billing? That's
They didn't have anybody down there to do it.
They didn't have anybody down there to do it, and we get paid for the extra staff time, so overall, the town, if you, if you believe it's one entity, which I believe it's one entity, if you believe it's one entity, it's actually, was cost effective to take over the billing. It was cost effective for them, cause they don't need a full-time person to do billing, and it filled out the position here, so you've actually netted down one position in the overall operation.
And their revenues that they get for all the people that are on the water and sewer, they don't have enough revenue coming into the town. So all the taxpayers, if you live up on West Hill, Big O Hill, and you do not receive water and sewer, you're still paying it, because they don't have enough revenue coming into town.
Oh, I know that.
About eighty thousand dollars is what the water and sewer department said, so eighty thousand dollars extra, because they don't have enough revenue coming in to cover their uh, revenue stream, or their, their budget for the year.
And so everybody will make that up. It's, it's just like the, the former Troy redevelopment group, which is still a current Troy redevelopment group. Every loan and grant that was underwritten and given to the former developer
Mm-hmm.
was guaranteed by the town of Troy. So while there are a lot of people who question, oh, we, you sold the mill, oh, you had this, that, and the other thing, we were on hook for that. So whatever we got, the feds and the state took, agreed to write off, we're all better off for it. That's just the way it has worked. We've, the, people fail to consider the things that we're all on the hook for. That somebody at some dim and dark time in the past agreed to. So why do we, why do we pay taxes to the town of Jaffrey? We have an act of the legislature that specifically says we do not have to pay taxes to the town of Jaffrey.
Then we should be able to answer that yourself, you're the select board, why do we pay that?
Because the water commissioners insist on paying them.
Ten thousand dollars a year for the past however many years they've been doing it, and I, when I first became a selectman, my first thing was I brought them all the proof they needed, all the legal documents that say you don't need to pay your taxes in Jaffrey for that property, and they said, meh. We'll keep paying it, because there, it's not, it's not correct.
We've paid them thirty-six thousand since twenty twenty.
Sure, they can, they, how about we don't pay the taxes and let Jaffrey figure out why we should? Instead, we're gonna run up the legal bill to figure out why we have to pay taxes to Jaffrey. It's pretty simple, there's
I mean, how are you running up a legal bill when you already know that you, you don't really have to?
Because they're gonna fight it, they wanna pay the money to fight it with a new lawyer, because they didn't trust the town's lawyer. Cause the town's lawyers looked into it twice, and they said, both times, you don't have to pay it, why are you paying it?
And the budget for the water and sewer for legal right now is currently thirteen thousand dollars. Onto, I just moved it.
No, I just stopped, cause it, it needs to be plugged into it, so.
So, um, you're not on camera, they didn't know, people are asking who's talking.
Tell them.
I guess we're supposed to state the name before they start talking, trying to back just a little bit.
But there, it's been a
Been a town over fifty years, they got nothing to hide.
It's been a growing issue with us, and we've tried to, like they said, it suits, when they're part of the town, it's for what suits them best. When they're not part of the town, it's because they don't wanna be, and it's, everything says they're part of the town. What's on the side of the truck, town of Troy, what's on the building, town of Troy, what's on the property card, town of Troy. It's not water and sewer department, it's the town of Troy, and
And when you get sued, it's the town of Troy.
Yeah. So cost of litigation that we're going through could have been avoided, but isn't. And the one they're about to step into, because they don't trust the town's lawyer, with the whole taxes of Jaffrey, they wanna do that next year and fight it again. You already had lawyers look at it twice, and the lawyer said, yeah, it's act of much later, it's what it is. Nothing, so it's we go round and round and round and round, and it's not fun.
And I don't think anybody in this room that, that looked at this is gonna say they don't have, they, they don't have their challenges down there. I mean, I honestly, it, that, everything, everything down there is underfunded, over age, and hard to work, work with, and you know, it's, people come at you, different regulators come at you from sixteen different directions, it's not clear. So it's not a cakewalk, it's not like, and no, everybody's, everybody involved with it is doing the best that they can. Uh, I think, I, I I disagree with some of the decisions they made, they I think, I I I disagree with some of the decisions they made, they disagree with some of the decisions I guess we've made here, whatever. So, there's nothing, you know, the questions, but that kind of stuff. We're not spending any money, any more money on lawyers to go sort out who's in charge between the Water Department and the Selectmen, that's just a waste of more money.
All right, so my opinion, I'm kinda disappointed that nobody has put anything out there for a woman for many years, bust their ass for this town, who has passed away, and nothing has been said yet.
So we were just notified about it, and this is our first meeting since she passed. We were just notified about it at the election, at it. I don't know how many people have been told from the family side, I I surely don't wanna announce it to the whole family that someone's passed away if they haven't been told by their own family yet. Kind of a.
Oh, I was put out there when it happened, but.
Well, we probably, we're gonna take care of that in the public, to be quite candid.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, yeah, uh, Veterans Day, there's gonna be a remembrance or something on the common. The eleventh hour, there's gonna be like a ceremony and everything for veterans, and uh, kind of get together with food and everything like that on Veterans Day.
Can we just start, Chris?
I think it starts at like ten, there's gonna be food, but the actual ceremony and everything's gonna kick off around eleven, so for the eleventh month, eleventh day, eleventh hour thing. So, yeah, I was just asked to mention that real quick.
It is called the Veterans Day special.
Or social.
Social, yeah. We have the permit.
All right, any other public comments?
All right, let's jump into the fun stuff, budgets. All right, first victim up tonight will be the Historical Society.
So I have, I have actually three, do I need to state my name and all that stuff?
Sure, if you want to, everyone knows you.
I don't, I don't want to. So I have three budgets to go over, one's the Historical Society, Kimball Hall, and the Cheshire Railroad Depot.
All right, we'll start with the first victim.
All right, so actually, on the Historical Society, we are keeping everything the same, there is no difference from last year to next year, or this year to next year. We will have spent, um, basically all of our advertising and our project fees shortly. We are getting bills coming in from Depot Day, and we have a couple of things that are coming through. Other than that, the nine fifty's staying the same. Do we do them all, and then you guys?
Go one at a time.
Say yay or nay, okay.
Do we raise the budget?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
We'll make a motion then?
Okay, sure, I move, we adopt, the budget is submitted.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Next one you have is Kimball Hall.
Kimball Hall.
Kimball, okay. So Kimball Hall, we're actually, um, we can go line by line if you want, I've put notes in here, but, um, or you can just kinda go over the totals, I've I've grouped it as totals, um, we're taking our budget down on Kimball Hall, um, from thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six to ten thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, so that's a difference of two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars that we're taking it down, and that, most of that is, um, out of the, um, the building, if you look at the second line, two-two-five. That's, um, we're taking that down, because that was in there from the, um, actually, that was in there from last year, when we did the repairs on the freight shed, and I got it put in my budget, and then we made that motion. It was put on the wrong, actually, it was put on the wrong one, it should have been put on the Cheshire Railroad Depot, but I I don't, it's dumb, so it's fine. But we are taking that back down to twenty-five hundred dollars. Other than that, um, the the basic things that we've had to take out for the water, the telephone bill, um, so the water is going from six hundred, whoops, I'm jumping lines, so sorry, I don't know if anybody has any questions. But the water, the fire extinguisher charge is going from one seventy to two hundred dollars, um, because if you look, what we spent already this year is one ninety, one fifty. And we have a couple more fire extinguishers that'll expire next year, um, and then.
And Kimball Hall?
Kimball, yeah.
I mean, how many have you got there?
Fire extinguishers, there's two, three, four, five, five, five or six.
They have them upstairs?
Yes, yeah.
But you don't use upstairs?
Yeah, we do.
So you do?
It's all storage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's storage, storage and stuff. But there's one in the kitchen, in that kitchen area, there's one in the closet, there's one in the main, um.
They still have a kitchen there?
Well, yeah, we, it's water, it's not, there's not a stove, but there's, helping hands has their, has their freezer there. So we, and we have, we have it set up as a kitchen, let's put it that way.
So your phone bill, I'm still working with, um, I'm having Sarah call the telephone company about that, because eighty bucks a month for a copper line is ridiculous.
It's crazy, but.
You don't need three-way calling, you don't need call holding, you don't need any of that.
We don't, I mean, we don't use it other than for, it's for the rest.
So when I go put the code in, right, for the, you know, they call me.
Exactly, I I get what it's for, but we're paying.
But I mean, no, it's it's ridiculous, it's the same thing with the depot, so I mean, I.
Yeah, I'm having Sarah work on it, see if she can get them to.
Well, should I leave it the same then?
Leave it for now, because it might, they might bite us and say, why are we gonna keep it that high?
All right. Um, and then the other one is the water in the sewer is going up, because we, um, we don't do shut-offs there, but our water bill keeps going up, obviously.
Well, thank you, I need to add some more, because the, they just talked about another increase for next year, so if you have enough in there for to cover it, I don't know when the increase is coming. But they just said it's gonna be another, probably a forty percent increase.
Right.
When they came through, in the big budget, so.
So. Do we take it up to a thousand?
It'll hit the last quarter, so if you take that divided by you haven't had your last quarter this year.
No.
So you still have one more quarter, which means you're probably gonna be over your budget.
Right, I will be, yeah, I will be, but that was based off last year's.
Last year's budget, it already went up forty percent, it's gonna go up again next year, is what they just said during their, while they were here, during their budget. So I have a forecast.
I think you wanna make the math easy and just double it.
Okay.
Because that's what it's gonna, what your projected amount would be?
I have.
That's what it really amounts to, is the water bills in town are gonna double between.
Okay. So from what I projected, from this coming, from next year at seven fifty, just double it?
No, I'd go up to nine hundred at least.
It's gonna be higher than that.
It's gonna be higher than that. Well, she's already. So she's gonna be at seven hundred and twenty this year, because it's about a hundred and eighty dollars a month, five a quarter for you.
She's already over.
I'm already, I'm gonna be over.
Right, you're gonna be over your seven hundred.
Yeah.
Because if it's a hundred and eighty per quarter, there's four quarters, it's seven hundred and twenty.
I thought you just said a thousand.
So a thousand?
No, you gotta go over about.
Depending, it really depends on when they're gonna increase it.
Last quarter, so last quarter is what they're saying, so that's only one.
Well, they said, I understood they were gonna, I I, my understanding was they were looking at June thirty.
I thought it was around July, too.
That would be the time they vote for it, and then if they can't put it in place, like they did this last time, back then, they have to have the last quarter bill.
Well, they can just do, they can just do it in March.
To clear that up, they never voted on it. I wanna point that out, it was never voted on to increase it, I sat and watched the meeting and went over it. There was no minutes to cover it, as of right now, there's no draft minutes saying that it was voted on. Because I did a ninety-one A request.
Yeah.
And it wasn't voted on, and it wasn't voted on to backdate anything either.
I think, yeah, I I, I think, I think you have to assume it's gonna be. You got a proposed budget of seven fifty, I think you need to lower it to a hundred dollars.
If they say twelve hundred, then. Just so you're not over budget on it.
Oh, and we know it's coming, you might as well.
Back it in, right.
That would almost double our bill each, each thing.
So we're at ten thousand nine hundred and six dollars then? I'll correct that, Jeremy, get that back to you.
It'll be eleven thousand, right? For the proposed?
Well, it was at seven fifty, and we took it up to twelve hundred.
Right, so it's four hundred and fifty bucks extra.
Okay, okay, you're right.
Yeah.
So eleven, I was, what'd you say, eleven? Eleven thousand six dollars. So you're you're changing where you're submitting it to us?
Yes.
Okay.
I will. I'll just send this spreadsheet back to you tonight, maybe. Good job, final workout, okay, Jeremy?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept amended. The budget amended.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Railroad Depot?
Okay, so we have the the depot, um, the depot budget actually is, I've, we've taken it up. Um, right now, without any changes, um, two thousand sixty-six dollars. The part of the reason for that is we've increased the building maintenance and repair from a thousand dollars to three thousand. I have, um, the edges of the roof that need to be repaired, we need to redo the doors, depot doors, add handrails, and there's a couple other things that need to be done down there to keep up with that building.
So once again, I go up on the Water and Sewer and?
Yeah, figuring when we get there, if anybody, is there any other, I mean, we don't have to go line by line, but does anybody have any other questions?
No, um, does the Water and Sewer shut off down there?
Yeah, so what, it shut off, it shut off, um, it'll be shut off the middle of this month.
Sure.
Until April, usually end of March, first of April, and then it will get turned back on, so I have two fees, a turn-on and a shut-off fee, which.
Twenty-five dollars a piece, right?
No, they were a hundred and.
A hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty dollars.
What were we talking about? Shut off, fish water.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, shut off and turn on, so.
A hundred and fifty bucks now.
So that, yeah, that's what we had budgeted, but now I'm gonna obviously be over. But I taken it up to, um, what was this one, six hundred and fifty dollars, so we need to go up even more? Because are the other shut-off fees and turn-on fees going up?
Who's doing that?
Water and Sewer, they're doing on and turn off.
Dollar, dollar.
So do we just use a dartboard, or?
That's kinda how the feeling is right now, so I would probably say bring this one up to a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well, you do, you must have a place for sunrise as well, right?
Yeah, as soon as we get it shut off, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, as soon as we.
Is that in that hundred and fifty? No, that's something separate.
No, we do, that's the, we just winterize it ourselves, it's, we just do the RV, the stuff we put in the ones.
Pump it through.
Pump it through. We have a very nice volunteer that does all that.
Not me, not this time.
One thing you're not volunteering there.
Nope.
I have to be there.
So the, that would be the change, the only change then, um, I did take the telephone rate up a hundred dollars. Um, just because we noticed that it was, um, you know, we're we're actually gonna be over. But if you're trying to to work on that, that would be awesome. I don't know why that phone bill down there is so high.
It's the same as all of them, it's basically eighty bucks a month.
Yeah, but we don't, I mean, other than that, nobody uses it.
Right, hey, you're getting, you're paying, it's the same rate everyone's getting.
They didn't know what their phone was.
And that's the problem, so.
Hiding behind the door.
Current rate, if you're paying eighty bucks a month at twelve months, you're nine hundred and sixty dollars.
All right, so that's gotta go up to a thousand two then?
I would most likely say yes, so an extra two hundred dollars on top of that, too. That's why I, when I saw the bill, and I was like, why is it?
Yeah, I know.
Why are we paying so much for this? I had, I said, I had Sarah call them up, and of course, she has to set on hold to call them.
Yes.
So we're looking at nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Now, there's, do you wanna hear about warrant articles too, or?
Sure, they're not part of this hearing.
No, but the question came up about the fuel, the tanks.
Yeah.
Um, we can probably get the stuff taken out, there's there's fuel in the tanks underneath the depot. Um, so we can probably get that pumped, we're gonna try to find somebody that can just use the waste oil. But the tanks will either A have to sit there, or we're gonna have to figure out how much it's gonna cost to get them soaked up, cut out, and dragged out this little hole, which means we probably have to rip the floor up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It must have gone in, was there a bulkhead that's been covered over?
No. They raised, when, if you look at the pictures from when the depot was a depot to when Bowers took it over, they actually put a small foundation walk up, under foundation, and the tank went in, and it's laying on its, both tanks are laying on their side.
Flat.
Horizontal tanks.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've been in there since Bower days.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I don't know why, when they redid the depot, they didn't pull them out, but they left the furnace hanging, it's, but it's a very old one, and then um, the two tanks are in there. I will, as far as we know, only one tank has oil, but we're not positive.
One's like mine, a crawl space hole, the other one's down the other end, and nobody's ventured down there.
How high is that crawl space?
Um, probably up to my shoulders if I stand up in there.
Like four feet?
Yeah.
Four feet.
Yeah, you gotta swat a little bit to walk around.
So I don't know, I mean, if I, I can get it taken out, get the oil taken out, um, but I don't.
That's the least of your problems, actually.
Yeah.
Digging out fifty-five gallon drums. So we can use it.
But I don't know how you're gonna get that hole.
That's what I figured, like, buddy grabs, you know?
The tank?
Yeah. Tank.
Well, that's why I asked if there's no bulkhead.
No.
It went in, here's the thing, we know it went in hole.
At some point.
Yes, but the, if you, the back floor.
Yeah.
And the, when you come in that second door closer to the train.
Yeah.
That looks like it might have been fixed, but there's now a small, basically an opening for one person to get down in. When they were trying to do the shut-off for the Water Department, I know who the guy was freaking out, because it was like, he had to barely fit. So that's gonna involve ripping up that floor, or cutting the tanks.
You can't cut the tanks in there.
Well, if you soak it all up.
Yeah, you're gonna cut a hole, you're filling it up full of side ash, you scoop it all out.
Well, you you, there's no, there's no, you never get it all out, you can, you can, and or speed dry or whatever.
I know, I'm just. You know, that's, so I don't know what, I don't know what to do with that point, I have no idea.
Well, the solution is to hire someone to remove it, it's not a Kim and Billy.
Yeah, no, no.
It's it's a, it's only gonna cost more money the longer we put it off.
Okay, so I will.
Because at some point, those oil tanks are gonna fail.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, is there?
When I first found out that we had them down, that's the first thing I thought.
Yeah.
We've been there for twenty plus years.
If we know, do we?
Sitting underground.
Is there a certain person we should call, or? Uh, we then, we use Swansea oil, I don't know if Swansea.
No, well, I could, yeah, I can, I can give you a couple of those.
Okay, all right, that would be great, okay. So then, Kurt, um, TJ, you said it was, my total was eleven thousand six dollars, so we're good, everybody accept that, or?
That was on the Kimball Hall, so we're on to Cheshire Railroad Depot, which is nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Nine thou, oh, sorry, I put it back, yeah, okay, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve that amended by nine-one-twenty-five. Around.
I have one more thing to move out of here.
Second it?
Yes, just to go.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I have one more thing, one more thing. Um, I actually, to, we are in the process of trying to get, um, power to the train, and we had gotten a quote last year, so I put it into this year, this past year's budget. Um, of course, everything went up, so, I have between my his, between the historical society, Kimball Hall, and the depot, we actually have enough funds left. But I needed, Sarah said I needed your permission, or you guys' permission, to use all three of those budgets on per line items to pay this bill.
We can do a budget line transfer, I move that we, uh, which 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 one do you wanna pull it out of?
It, um, well, um, the Cheshire, it should come out of the depot.
So I move that we consolidate the surpluses from Kimball Hall, Cheshire Depot, and what's the third one?
Historical Society.
Historical Society, into one line item being the. Building maintenance and repair line?
Yes, yeah.
Line forty-one ninety-six dash two twenty-five, building maintenance and repair, for purposes of wiring, providing electricity to the train car.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all we have.
Next victim.
You're up, I broke the mic.
Alright.
You stop it now.
Thank you.
You too.
You're good, boy.
You too.
Yeah.
Have fun with the budget, if any of the ones were gonna be hard losses. I'd say lovingly. Alright, chief, step on up.
Which one do I do first?
Uh, our top one is the police department.
If you go through the other quicker. Okay, let me find that, okay. Is that? Okay.
Yep.
Who wants to?
Uh, well, first question for all the raises that you've done, have you done your annual, um, review for all your peoples?
If this gets approved, I will. Cause I get all, when you do your annual reviews for your employees, that's for getting a raise, and I know exactly how they are, and I fire them, they work up this park, so. If you want that before you pay this, fine, but they're all doing fine.
No, you just wanna make sure they get done, that's the main thing, so, uh, uh, all the annual reviews for everyone, for your people, but anyone else in town that we're responsible for, we wanna make sure.
Yeah.
And we owe him one.
Yes. We owe you one. Ball, ball.
Ball. Uh-oh, don't let Jeremy do it.
No.
I already started on it, oh. Um, see, that's the, that's the.
So, um.
Is that your computer support line in total?
That's what they told me. Um, last year. I had fifteen-five in there, and I've spent twenty-one, okay? Because it was, and this is something I'm gonna look into more, because there's so many things that they're changing and adding to my, my computer system. That a lot of it, I haven't approved even, or knew was happening. Um, and so. The way it stands now, unless they do some other things without letting me know, we figured out, I spoke with Sarah and stuff, and we looked at everything, that that was, would be. What, right now, that we.
Did she look up what we, she's charged for?
Yeah.
She already looked up the, the twenty-one.
The twenty-one, yeah, and it was things that, things I didn't even know that were being changed in my computer system. Uh, we did add, you know, I knew we added one, um, station, which wasn't really that much. But then there was other things, things to do with the cloud and all this other stuff that I knew nothing about, and was charged for, so. Um, I was gonna give them a call and say, hey, what's going on? You know, but if the way it stands right now, we figured it out that the eighteen would cover the yearly.
And that includes the stuff I sent you?
Yeah.
We'll have that meeting.
But, I don't know, huh?
We'll have that meeting and figure it out.
Yeah, Jeremy's got a meeting set up with Brad, is Brad at Worldwide? Um, and we'll see what they have to say, I have another guy that called me, who I know that, and I also know that he does the computer stuff for other municipalities and stuff. And he said he can come over and talk anytime, and see if he could do it any, any cheaper. Again, I'm relying on them because I'm not a computer person, so, but I do, would like to be, you know, know when money's taking out of my budget.
Right.
Um, and for what, because, you know?
I'll pull those up and look at them, that's quite a big difference.
Um, when you do, if you need computer backup, that information, so, yeah, that's what I personally do. Have fun with it, that's what I do.
Part of, lovely job.
Um, so. So, you know, I'm up on the overtime, cause I figured it out, um, so we have eleven holidays in town, and. With those eleven holidays, you get time and a half when you work them, and so, it's like fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars just for paying holidays for off.
Well, you have to have coverage on the holidays.
Right, right.
Makes sense.
And so, um.
Honestly, I wasn't gonna question any of that stuff, the next question I had is gonna be about the vehicles.
The vehicle, yep, okay.
Cause you don't have a new car, uh, the new vehicle on the line yet.
Yeah, I do, should. Yeah, it's down the line.
Oh, there it is hiding, there it is, okay, that's why I was gonna ask about tires and repairs on that, okay.
Yeah.
So that is, it's just weird.
Were you repairing already the first year?
Huh?
Repairing changes and stuff, it is. Uh, do you have that up and running yet, or?
Yeah, it's parked out there, you guys wanna see it later, it's right there.
I saw it, I saw it.
Yep.
Alright, so you removed the fourteen Dodge.
Yes.
You gotta clean up your things, it still has your, the O-nine Vic on there.
They said that I have to keep all those on there because if.
Yeah, you can't.
I can't.
Government accounts.
Put another cruiser or something on those particular line items.
Or you have to go to another one, it's somebody's account.
As you can tell down bottom, that's, it's a different number.
Right. Yeah, I I found that difficult to accept, too, but that's.
Kinda weird, but okay.
Government accounting.
Uh, you have nothing for training, hiring, testing?
No, no.
I got no other questions, anyone else have any questions?
I'm looking to see if there's something I need to run by you.
So you have fire extinguishers in the building, or in the?
Well, they're, the fire extinguishers, I believe, are on the, I know, they're on this one, right?
There, there's a line on there, but that's what I'm wondering, should there be money in there for recharge and all that, cause if you have many vehicles and all that as well?
Right, I'd only put it instead of, maybe on the, um.
Hmm, that's what I'm checking the other.
Emergency service point, yes, it is.
Recharge fire extinguishers.
Yes, so, it's on that one and not in the, in the.
That's what I was wondering, that was the other one I was wondering about.
Cause it's also fire extinguishers in the service, just the service building, and we put them in the cruisers from there. Yeah, um, yeah, uh, yeah. You have the one that showed what I spent this year?
No.
I mean, I'm looking okay, um.
We had an updated budget last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we went through most of them, same.
Yeah.
Alright. So gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve the police general fund.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Onward to emergency management.
Okay. Forty-two ninety. So, the emergency management one, okay, so. As you can see, yeah, that is up from last year, in other years. Because I forget what year it was that, um, I believe it would've been a budget committee changed things, because there was, like, under the emergency management payroll, there was a budget. But when I took it over, I said, hey, you know, I'll be, be there anyway, cause I'm the police chief, so I didn't put anything in there. But what I wasn't really thinking of was the fact that whatever's left in this, this, uh, budget, the emergency management, that goes into a special emergency management, um.
Reserve fund?
Capital reserve, where that's where they, it it, it's over the years, probably back at, I'm assuming Bobby Heber, when he was doing it.
Yeah.
Um, and that's how we have money in that reserve fund in case of emergencies and stuff. But it was, whatever was left from, or this budget, went in there at the end of the year.
Yeah.
While putting one dollars on something and hoping we don't have to use that line item.
Yeah, doesn't help that.
And I'm, I'm not even sure, I have, I'm gonna check into it, if any money got put into those that was left in this, cause.
Is that, well, no, that, that would be a bad thing, because if that's, if the fund, you have to look at the initial. If the fund was created specifying that the surpluses get moved over there.
Mm-hmm.
And they weren't moved over there, we have to move them over there, you can't not do that, so we would owe the money from any prior years where it wasn't moved over.
Okay, well, just, I wanted to just sort of do it after this, then.
Well, no, but we, I'm saying, if we didn't do it last year, we have to put that money in there.
One way or another, we have to put it.
Yeah, that's, would be.
Which the auditors should capture.
Yeah, which makes me think it may not be, it either wasn't a surplus, or it wasn't structured that way.
Well, like you said, that they were just, they would move this down to a dollar, so there's been no money early in there.
No, no, I get that, yeah, that would explain it, too, but. Alright, so anyway, you've come back with a proper budget at this point, right?
That's, yes, um.
I move that we approve the forty-two ninety-six as submitted.
A second, alright, any further discussion?
I thought we had something funny, the line item is forty-two ninety, forty-two ninety-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, it's real leper though.
Huh?
So you have that line, the whole thing is forty-two ninety.
Oh, yeah.
And your budget is forty-two ninety-six.
Could've done that again if you tried.
I think it's a counter show.
You could do that again, try.
Animal control.
Okay.
Alright. Hold on a second. We may need to ratify that, that doesn't add up.
What?
The math isn't mathing.
Are you doing?
On that last one?
Yep. Should be forty-two ninety-eight.
Forty-two ninety?
Yes. I thought it was a little off. Cause four and the four, one dollars.
Right, you're right.
Oh, so, I have to buy you, it's open, I mean, I have to work.
Are you gonna submit it that way to us, that's forty-two ninety-eight?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Just be happy that I caught him, not the budget committee, cause they would've ripped into somebody on both sides.
For two dollars?
Hey, two dollars, two dollars, man.
Add it to my water bill.
Alright, so on to animal control.
So, I know we have people that still haven't registered their dogs in town.
Yeah.
Are we working that?
Yeah, I got, my secretary's working on the, all the list of, and stat and rail summoning.
Okay, cause I know for a fact, there's been several people in town that are refusing to register their dogs.
Until they get busted by the animal control officer.
So, what you gonna do, what you gonna do? You'll play that when you go to the north?
Yeah. So, let's see. So. Under the equipment purchase, Dave, you see?
It's like three hundred bucks, yeah.
Yeah, um, I've been looking at, um, a tool that would help us with capturing a dog that, um, will come to us. Um, it it's a net gun, and it's pretty cool, and if the dog won't come to us, you can shoot this net over it and it keeps the dog. And I talked to Courtney about it, too, cause he, he told me about it, and so I looked it up, and it would be a, a good tool, cause we, we, well, Courtney helped. It took probably an hour and a half to capture one dog, cause, and two pounds of hot dogs, and Courtney kept trying to feed it. So, um, it would've been nice if we had that net gun, it could've.
Could save all some dogs.
Yeah, could save a hot dog, um. And I've seen plenty of video on them and stuff, and they're pretty cool, they're only a couple hundred bucks, but.
Do you do a Facebook, lost animals is an issue this town?
Uh, it uses an air tank, I believe?
That's the same, same dog.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
I haven't tried it yet, no.
Yeah.
They work really well on.
Well, they work with good old people, too, I assume that, yeah, not that, that's why I want it.
Wait, dog dogs and nets, both.
Guess one ones are going out. So, for the travel reimbursement, I've never put a gag in there before, only because if. Somebody uses their own vehicle, if it's not police related, but it's animal control related, they would have to be paid, um, mileage.
Right.
Um, so, that's why I put that in there this year.
Makes sense, like the humane society or something.
Yeah, from here to the humane society. But, yeah.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Please figure, he, he's making sure my figures are right.
This one's a lot easier, they're nice, even numbers, they're most.
You want to approve that, submit it?
Do you agree?
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we don't have a separate one for your building, do we?
Yeah, we can sum it up.
Emergency service building.
Put that one. There you go. That's what I asked about the, the fire extinguishers.
Well, Harvey used to say, each two.
Uh, just for the water and sewer, I'll make sure we go up on that because. Four dollars.
Yeah, you're not, you need to go up, but you don't use it anymore, but your flat fees are gonna be higher.
Yeah, you get a flat fee.
You're, you're under the flat fee now. Four fifty would be, you know, a minimum of one fifty. I'm on water repair, water and sewer.
Right.
Cause one fifty is six hundred bucks, you're already overspent that a lot of free building, so. Um, I mean.
Seven fifty?
Uh, I wasn't even thinking, just going to give a thousand on it. So it's the same thing we did with Kempel Hall, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Bring it up, because we don't, we don't know what that increase is really gonna be at the end.
Yeah, but he's gonna be under the minimum. So the real question is, when are they gonna make the minimum? If they make the minimum two hundred, that's eight hundred for the year. Except they're not gonna do it in the first quarter, so.
That's gonna be, it's supposed to be the last quarter, even if the last two quarters, they go two hundred, you got a hundred fifty, hundred fifty.
It should be six now, so I got seven fifty.
Yeah, that's not bad.
So you, what, you want me to go up on that water?
Yeah, two hundred bucks.
To seven fifty?
Yeah. That should be your, assuming they raise it for the second quarter and there's a minimum of two hundred.
Okay.
So I'll make a total of fourteen eight twenty-nine.
What was it?
Fourteen eight twenty-nine.
Fourteen eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine, okay. Thank you.
Put that random nine in there for property insurance.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
So we on the emergency service?
Yes.
Building.
Okay. Um, just be, last year, well, this year, um, I'm already at, as of the sixth of this month, twenty-seven, oh, twenty-eight hundred dollars for electricity. That's why I went up.
That makes sense, and it was, we were supposed to have been on community power, I didn't get it, my building, but I'm.
I think it would be.
Supposed to start in November.
October. Supposed to be on November bill.
Yeah, no, it's supposed to.
Start in November, we just got the letter and, uh.
Yeah. You're gonna steal.
All the town buildings, we just got an email about it, um.
Well, yeah, the town willing contract goes through anyway, so. Got a town building.
But it's supposed to start in November, right?
Community power does, but we can't, it's October, it's October. Water and sewers is October this month. Alright. Which is good, because they're bills way more long.
Yeah.
So that all makes sense, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But you, you must be on average, or it's just like everyone else, right?
Yeah.
When am I gonna sign? Love to check.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause almost all of them are on the current square, yeah. That's cause you're paying for the animal service, leave the lights on in the bay.
Much better off, you know, they don't, they don't sound bad, they're not there that much, so. Who do my guys?
Alright, so next is your police revenue offset?
Yeah.
You went down on the duties, or detailed salary?
Yeah, um.
You still let people want to go, right?
This, yeah, this year, right, I don't really have people, I mean, still we have a couple that will do it, but we really didn't, um, have that many.
Now, the companies are supposed to reach out to someone if they're on the common or in the middle of the road with a crane or any of that, right?
Yeah. Yep, see if they, they need, need somebody.
I've seen on the common without anybody and they've always been hit like so many times, that's why I'm wondering. It's particularly newer companies in the area, so. Alright, anybody have any questions on this one?
No. Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
That wasn't too bad.
You got it all for us?
Yeah, so, like, do you, did, you get, oh, we're gonna do that late some other time?
Yeah, we can do it.
Huh?
As she wants. Your buddy needs to.
Did you have the social security and the?
I didn't finish the workers' comp.
Oh, okay. Well, we can bring it up another day then. Um, we used to have a, a health department budget, but it's been several years since we haven't, we didn't have one. So, um, I kinda made up one on just the line items that would be, we would need something in them, um, for, for money, but, um, I got it to him late today, so we just need to do the social security and the, the, um, workers' comp, but, um, I'd like to have, have something so that.
Why was it eliminated?
I have no idea, I was gonna look into that.
Cause mental health required a police department now? Sorry, I couldn't.
Wait, what?
Cause some big mouth myself, so I'll do it, but not.
It's like the emergency service one?
Huh?
It's like the emergency management part. So, we have to, we'd have to create a whole new?
Nope, it's actually, it hasn't. Yeah, it's just never, it hasn't been funded, I don't know how long, I'll, I'll look into that, uh, before, but I'll just bring that back here, um, but just to give a jip, would, it would be like fifteen hour a week job, um, doing that, some weeks it'd be fifteen, sometimes it wouldn't.
So would be better to put it on stipend?
Health issues, yes, it'd be a stipend. Yeah.
There's actually lines in there for some of the non-profits that we plan. Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll, we'll get me and Jeremy to work on that for the social security and the workers' comp and bring that back here.
Good?
Okay.
I don't even know if it's on the schedule, why not, because it's.
Well, no.
We'd have to.
I always like to show.
When do I have to see the PD?
Huh?
Or when do they, when do I have to see the PD? When do you have to see the budget committee?
I have no idea.
In the next meeting, so.
Eighteen?
They're not reading that one, it's August eighteen. Let me see it.
Well, you can, you can pick it up on the, uh, you know, the, there's that extra meeting, the B-VAC meeting, whatever you call it.
Yeah, I just wanna get ahead on this one, cause I'm driving down there.
So I, we figured, I got, um, so that would be that, but it would be paid out with the stipend. And then, um, if there was another ships, it's down at fifty dollars for the license for the entity being for the health and spending, for the state.
Cause you've got it, why don't we do it now?
That's why I said, the only thing that's not updated is the social security and workers' comp. So we can approve it pending those things are, so currently it would be. Jeremy, can you make that this for me real quick? Before I go writing on these. Then he'll never be able to read it. I have that.
You ain't seen one. But you ain't seen Max either.
I was told I could be a doctor.
I wouldn't watch him.
Can you even read what doctors write? Man, I tried doing that one time, I was like, what did you prescribe me? Oh, don't worry, the, the, the folks down at the pharmacy know what I'm writing here. I hope so. Yeah, I figured, like, here, we can just settle this one real quick, it's not a big one. Oh, you sent non-public?
I do.
You have it?
Thank you, sir.
Any with days?
Screwed it, eight ninety-five, by the way. I, eight ninety-five's on my head for that.
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred ninety-five.
Eight hundred? Was the budget running on that? I don't know. Yeah?
Well.
Unless my phone was wrong.
I don't know.
Alright, but well. Okay. So with half those other ones, it's twelve ninety.
Okay. Remove that we approve the health department budget in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars.
Plus workers' comp, social security.
Uh, well, plus twelve thousand nine hundred and two dollars. You put a dollar in the line for each one?
Yeah. Makes sense.
Oh, okay.
To start it until we get there.
Yeah.
Then we'll pay them.
Okay.
One second.
Alright, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeremy, did you look at we had a dollar in pretty close?
Cool.
And you said you need them for non-public?
Oh, no, I don't need data for non-public.
You need it for non-public?
Um, there was an incident that happened earlier this week.
Oh, yes.
So I was thinking, but.
Can we come back? We better just do it.
Well, what, do we have, is Jeremy here for a, a budget?
Matt.
Matt.
Matt, I'm, I'm sorry, Matt.
No, we're down on budgets, it's a soft budget.
No.
With him?
With my.
Which one is not public?
Yeah.
What's?
Which one is it? Um, reputation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Make the decision to go into non-public under ninety-one A. I got it here, just need to get to it.[1780.94]